Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you would please stand for our invocation and our pledge.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven once again will assemble ourselves on the third floor to do the business of Cartersville, Georgia. At the same time, we move within transition from an outstanding city manager going on to enjoy his retirement and invite again preparing for a new Ms. Tamara Brock. Give her the same mind, the same servant attitude, the same confidence that we are used to. We ask you to bless each department head in this assembly that will continue to do diligence for the citizens of Cartersville so we can work and play and live together and enjoy the fruits of our labor. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Use Ms. Olmert's foot, the roll please.
Carrie Roth, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Steph, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Present.
Calvin.
Here.
I had him occupied.
Gary Clark, Ward 5.
Here.
Catherine, Ward 6.
I'm here. Thank you, Meredith. We have got, as Calvin said, well put, in our invocation this evening, we have the first order of business tonight even before the meeting minutes as we have the swearing in of our new city manager, Ms. Tamara Brock. And I'll just leave it at that. Ms. Olmert, your to do the duties.
Ms. Tamara Brock, having been appointed city manager effective June 28th this year of the city of Cartersville, Solomon Square or Fern, that you will faithfully hand in parts due to charge and duty of the office to the best of your ability while following the provisions of the city charter and that you will support the constitution of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. Amen.
And Mayor, if I would note for y'all, that takes effect on June 28th. Mr. Grove is still here until 5 o'clock that day.
You wrote that down.
I did, I did, just for you.
Although he has told me he may not be sitting back against that wall by the end of this meeting.
That is true too.
I don't know what kind of leverage I have at this point. Council, you have before you the approval of the council meeting minutes from our June 7th meeting. You've had an opportunity to look these over and make any kind of corrections if they're any needed. Now would be the time to make those changes and if not, motion would be in order.
Motion approved minutes.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved, thank you. Ms. Brock, actually this first item, I'm going to recuse myself since I have a family member who's employed by the company involved with this, so I'll see y'all in a minute. Mr. Cooley will handle this item.
The next item is a Rotary Club of Edgewall for the 4th of July celebration. This is a contract between the city of Cartersville and the Rotary Club of Edgewall for the July 4th celebration at Dunham Park. Additionally, JMR Maintenance Services Incorporated has contracted with the Rotary Club of Edgewall to coordinate this event. This item is now up for motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
I mean, he really left. Chief, he could tell Matt he could come back in.
Probably because that frame was a little wet.
You didn't get part.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, you've got the next several items, please.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the first item I'm bringing to you is the contract for performing services. If you remember, these are the outside agencies that the city usually funds. The list of folks are Carsville Barto Library, Cultural Arts Alliance, Juvenile Court, Barto Health Access, Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter, Summer Hill Learning Center, Eddie Lee Wilkins' Youth Association, and the Barto Cartersville Joint Development Authority. Again, this is annually given money by the city for their services and I recommend approval of the contract for performing services.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Tom.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I bring to you tonight the need for a new audit firm. I was notified on May 29th that our current audit firm is going up on our fees by $20,000. The reason I was given it was due to the complexity of the gas fee changes over the last several years. In our opinion, this is kind of extravagant and we are requesting that we award our new audit services to Malden and Jenkins of Atlanta. The cost of the three-year contract is $55,000, $57,000, and $59,000 respectively for 2018, 2019, and 2020 audit services. I recommend approval of this with the Malden and Jenkins.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on, next item for me is, Honorable Mayor and Council, is the proposal of the water and sewer fund rate increase. I do want to clarify this, first of all, this is the second reading, there have been no changes since the first reading. This is not just being put on the residential folks, it's being spread across or given or passed on, I should say, to all the rate users of the city of Cartersville. We actually just used the residential to advertise because most of the residential folks are curious as to how much is going to increase for the water bill. With that, I recommend, since this is the second reading, recommend the approval of the increase, seven and a half percent water and sewer rate increase across the board beginning July 1st, 2018.
And Tom, I'm sorry, I should have had you prepared for this. If you don't have it, I'm sorry, the average amount of a water bill is going to go up about how much?
$2.24 for a resident customer and that's on about 7,000 gallons consumed.
Okay, thank you. And I just did want to point out that, you know, historically, this is what the city has done every year during budget time. The council has taken the approach that it's better to have, well, nobody likes paying more, we're all rate payers up here as well.
Correct.
That, you know, it's much better to go up a little bit each year, $2 and whatever cents you said, that
I would certainly think that
some other places that have, like Atlanta, a few years ago had to go up about 30 or 40 percent.
Correct.
And it really create a hardship. So, the tactic of council along with the recommendation of staff has been to do this incremental change and help keep up with the unfunded mandates and all the other things that come this way.
And there are a lot of unfunded mandates coming down the pipeline, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that people knew that. So, any other questions or discussion on this? And if there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And Tom, the budget ordinance for this year?
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, this is the second reading of the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2018-19 budget. There have been no changes since the first reading. I will briefly go over what's included in that budget. The proposed budget includes salary adjustments for all departments, no increases in the city's mileage rate, that was property tax mileage rate. There's funding for the school system, there's no increase in staff, there's an increase in health insurance premiums both for the city and the employees, and an increase in the residential water and sewer rates. I recommend approval of the fiscal year 2018-19 budget as presented.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions about that document or any questions about that budget for Tom at this time? I would point out, although, again, the people that may be listening or watching and saying, gee, they're passing something pretty major without a lot of discussion, this is something that councils had in their hands for months after staff prepared it, we've had a couple readings and everybody's had a chance to look at it, so it's not that we're just blindly seeing it.
Correct.
We've got plenty of time to look at this and review it, so.
Correct.
That being said, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
The, Mr. Lovell, you have the next item, please.
Yes, Mayor, as y'all are aware, this is the second reading of the supplemental bond ordinance. This is where we updated the bond ordinance to include the actual pricing that the city received on the bonds. It is recommended by our consultants and staff for your approval.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino, you have, you'll get us started on SU 18-02, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, I'd note this property has been properly posted and advertised, appears to be no conflicts of interest. If you recall, several months back, probably two or three months ago, Taylor Farm Supply came in and applied for a text amendment to allow for limited outdoor storage of landscape supplies and materials in the MU zoning district within the side and rear yards and not in the front. With that, that text amendment did go through and, again, the reason it was done is as a special use was so that anytime somebody came to do that, it's not allowed by right, you were able to take a look at the application and review what was being proposed. In this particular instance, Tim Grotto, who owns Treasure Chest on Tennessee Street, has made a request for a special use to allow for this and he recently purchased the dry cleaners that is next door on the corner of Mimosa. With that, he wants to connect the two via fence, decorative fence that he's going to place up there that he showed to the planning commission and display concrete statuaries, fountains, burb baths in that particular area as part of his business. With that, the planning commission did hold a public hearing and they did recommend approval of this special use permit application.
Okay. And you said at the planning commission, there was, I know there was an issue with the electric department, that's addressed with a
Yes, the electric department did note that they do have a meter within that area that's proposed to be fenced. Tim has other areas that are also fenced that they deal with right now because of meters. There's a couple of options they have doing a double lock on their fence and so forth, but that can be worked out. It's not an issue where meter ears will not be able to get there, so prior to the fencing, that will be completely worked out.
Okay, and you'd mentioned in the work session that that, the actual location, the fencing
Yes.
will get hammered up, okay, that's fine. All right, any other questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll open up a public hearing relative to SU 18-02 and ask anybody who wants to step forward, speak for against, to do so at this time. And if you would, sir, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
I'm Tim Gartow, 11 Chestnut Street, Cartersville, Georgia. Represent Treasure Chest and may be here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Any questions for the applicants? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to step forward, speak for against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU 18-02. This is the first reading. Council will take this up for final consideration in our first meeting in July, which will be July the 5th. Let's see, Keith, you've got the next item, please, an ordinance item.
Yes, Mayor, this will be a first reading of an ordinance to amend the false alarm ordinance in the city. The current false alarm ordinance requires that citations be issued, so violations would have to go through the municipal court. The revision is to change it to service charges being issued so the city can just bill the individuals directly without having to issue citations. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Okay, any questions for Keith at this time on this item? Again, this is the first reading of an ordinance and, again, we'll take this up for final consideration or July 5th. All right, Mr. Porter, you have the next three, sir.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this first item is a renewal of the property and casualty workers' comp insurance for the fiscal year 2018-19. This number was included in the current budget just passed. The new number for the property and casualty, as I mentioned, the new fire engine you saw was additional $3,305 for that to insure for next year. So, the total number of the property and casualty is $529,147. Recommend that for your approval as well as the workers' compensation. We've been self-insured since 2007, up to $500,000 deductible, which we have some reserves to cover, some of those, if we have catastrophic, we do have kind of semi, we have safety meetings periodically and work through issues and try to keep our claims cost down. The new increase for that two-year premium is $64,447. I recommend approval of both these items.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Dan on this item? Hearing none. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Dan.
Yes, this goes back to January 2016 lawsuit when we were covered with One Beacon Insurance and we received a deductible invoice in the amount of $6,084.82. One of the things just to keep in mind is when we set the budget, I actually include money in there for deductibles, that's, so what you just approved for the renewal, there's also additional money in there for cover these deductibles up to a certain point. I do recommend approval of this invoice of $6,084.82.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Dan.
This is a current year travelers' insurance deductible invoice for three different vehicle accidents totaling $12,201.85 and I recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Rebecca, you have this next item, Ms. Bill Lander.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the annual fee for the city of Cartersville website hosting company. It is for $13,873.73. It is a budgeted item and recommended for your approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Rebecca on this? And if not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hassbrug.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The electric department needs to purchase a cable fault locator to replace the one that recently failed with us. It was unexpected, but it's about 20 years old and economically not feasible to repair it at this time. We use this locator to help find if a cable failure happens on the underground cable, it may be two miles away and we can't afford to be digging up everybody's property, so this piece of equipment has radar on it and a cable voltage impulse that puts us within two or three feet of the fault. And so, it greatly expedites our outage time and customer satisfaction, so unfortunately, we didn't see this coming, it's not budgeted. So, what we're proposing is to take money that we had dedicated to another piece of equipment. We moved the priority up on this, this is a higher priority, so we're going to take the priority two and shove it back one year and purchase it in next year's budget. We'll have money in the budget, hopefully it'll be approved next year, but that's what we're recommending and we took three bids and we recommended the council approve the purchase of the underground fault locator equipment with the low-cost bidder who is Morgan Advanced Products for the price of $27,482.76.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Do you see any, the piece of equipment that you were going to buy with the money proceeding, problem not getting that piece of equipment, what was the piece of equipment? What was the piece of equipment here bypassing?
It was a, it was a vacuum trailer where you got, where you got underground utilities, a lot of utilities in a certain area. The new technology is that you can, you can just suck up the dirt around it and it won't damage the existing cables. And sometimes we had to hand dig because the underground utilities are so tight. So, we were going to implement that, but the gas department has one, we can borrow if we need it and get us by, but we'll use that as a, put that a priority two.
Michael said he just heard that for the first time tonight.
What's that?
That he was going to borrow, that you were going to let, he was going to let you borrow his stuff.
I'll bet.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Mike.
That's right. All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, what would a beating be without a bunch of items from you?
I know it. If I ever take a break, it just makes the next meeting worse, so.
That's right.
First up tonight is our grit collection auger. We talked about it a little bit in the work session. This is a piece of equipment that basically removes sand and abrasives that come into the wastewater plant, protects all the downstream equipment from that. This is a metal contraption that runs in wet sand 24 hours a day, so you can imagine that it lives a very difficult life. And the picture up here that we talked about, if you look, this is a brace holding this auger up. It's been patched twice already. And we were looking at it and just thinking, you know, it may just be time to replace it, so that's what we have for you tonight. The low bid came in from P&amp;W Machine at $6,085.42 and that will be their labor to install new gearbox motor drive equipment that we will purchase and their labor to fabricate this piece that you're looking at here.
Okay, great, okay. Any questions on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Bob.
Next up is a belt press PLC upgrade. We use three two-meter belt presses to de-water solids that are residuals from the wastewater treatment process. Last year, we did two of the three belt presses, this exact same project. When they were put in almost 20 years ago, they had a lot of electromechanical controls. That stuff does not do well in a damp environment, particularly a damp environment for 20 years, and it is becoming much more problematic. It's even hard to get parts and get service technicians that know how to work on it anymore. This would be an upgrade to a more modern programmable logic controller. It's essentially the same project that we did last year and our low bidder is the same vendor that did the project last year. That was Hero Electric at $12,750 and would recommend that for your approval.
Thank you. Discussion on that item and if not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I believe up next is our tree planting at the wastewater plant. I think we're all familiar with the new walking trail that runs the length of the wastewater plant. Back in about 2010, we planted somewhere around 150 trees to begin growing as a screen for the new trail. And you can see here, this is a picture that's indicative of some of the plantings from that time. Drought has taken a toll on them. We've had issues with lawnmowers, weed eaters, you name it, they've taken out a few of these. And we'd like to go in and fill in those areas where we have some dead trees and thicken the screen up a little bit. We took bids for planting labor and 60 plants and the low bid came from Tidwell Lawn Care at $10,800. Would recommend that for your approval and it is budgeted.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Could there be any insecticide or pollen on the ground that might hinder the new plants?
There's, it's always possible and I'll tell you a few of those, I'm not convinced that we, I think we had an issue of a, maybe a jail trustee that was a little overzealous in his roundup application one time that got a few of these. We will, we will try to take measures to prevent that from happening again, but, you know, as far as the ground itself, no, it should be fine.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Bob.
Yes, sir, I think last up for me is the Jimmy Don Crane Sewer Relocation, as we have named it. We go from time to time and inspect our aerial sewer crossings. They obviously are prone to a little more damage and wear than something that's buried three or four feet under the ground. And in this particular instance, you can see the pipe crossing the creek and if you notice, there is, there is some deflection in that pipe, there's a kink in the middle of it. Sewer pipe, as a general rule, needs to be as close to gun barrel straight as you possibly can get it. This causes multiple problems with this line. One, as you can obviously see, it's acting as a catch for every piece of material that comes down that creek, which is putting lateral pressure on the line. Additionally, it causes a reverse grade in the line and causes the water to back up here. The area of deflection there is actually a joint between two pipes, so it is a weak point. And eventually, as the stream widens and undercuts the pipe, that joint will fail and cause a spill into the creek. For that reason, we have requested a proposal from Rent McDuff and Associates to design a relocation of this line and they have proposed a cost of $66,340 for that work and that would include all design through construction oversight, so that would be full services for them for this project. Do recommend that for your approval and it is a budgeted item.
Okay, thank you. Discussion and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Laxon, you're going to handle the next item for us, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is a very similar project to the last one. The location is the Waterford subdivision. It is a 36-inch interceptor sewer and as you can see in the photos, there's a lot of erosion around this in the stream bank. We are proposing that Rent McDuff design a relocation of this and hopefully go underground under the bottom of the stream bank. The amount on this is $66,650.
Okay, any question or discussion on this item?
Is that for the design or is that for the design and construction?
This is for their services during both design and construction. This is not the construction itself, it's their guidance and inspection oversight.
Jason, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned, asked this in the work session, so you're actually going to lower that?
Not in that location. We are hoping, it'll be based on survey and elevations, but we are hoping to be able to go further upstream to a point to where we can have all or part of that pipe completely underground.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions or discussion and if there are none, a motion is in order.
I just want to add one other comment, just, I know this is the neighbors in residents' backyards. I think the more you can communicate with the people that may be affected earlier is better.
Yes, sir.
I know that there's surveyors that have already been out there and the neighbors didn't know that they were out there to talk to them, but there were other folks, not under this, but have been out there, but I think just the impact it has on their backyard or what's going on in their neighborhood, I think
Yes, sir, we'll make, we'll make sure to fully communicate with everyone surrounding this.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jason. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is just a discussion and asking for some direction on our jail bond project list. This is a project that the voters approved in November 2014, received the money in early 2015 and we have a total of, where's my numbers at? $900, $9,700,000 to spend, that's the grant, that's the bond money, and $1,710,000 in grant money, which we've received, all that money with the exception of $200,000, a $100,000 grant for DNR for the shelters and remaining just a little over $100,000 for the trail grant from DNR. So, that said, on May 28th, we had approximately $1.4 million remaining in the fund and leaving approximately, we're committed to about $500,000 in already continuing projects, which is the Recreation Buildings Phase 2 and then the Dillinger Sign and the Dillinger Tennis Center. So, that's leaving approximately $980,000 and we have about, according to our original budget, about $1.4 million remaining projects. And I have reprioritized and redid a budget for council just to start discussion and I'll be glad to answer any kind of questions.
Greg, I'll start off because again, it's something I actually thought of in the work session, but I know that a few years ago, we changed the light poles out of Dillinger, but we didn't change the lights, is that, when we converted from a lot of wooden posts to cement posts?
Yes, the, what we did was a softball what we did was the softball fields, the softball fields four, five, and six. The fields are the courts that remain, or the basketball courts six and seven... I'm sorry. Tennis court six and seven, tennis court 14, two outdoor basketball courts, and then field lighting, as far as field lighting, and lighting at the sports complex on two to three fields over there.
Got you. Okay. Are there any questions for Greg on this list and the prioritization that he did? I think the summary that's on your packet that Jason delivered to you in the work session is a pretty good synopsis of everything that's there.
I mean, I do think that we've addressed everything that we promised the citizens that we would address. The two things that unless additional money comes available, the parking area and the outdoor playground is our new items, although they were on the list, it's not something we're renovating. And, you know, but I would, you know, I want to continue the projects, and I'm working right now on bids for lighting and bids for the... for tennis. Those are the two large... largest items remaining.
Yep. And it's just for point of clarification, you said outdoor playground. It's an outdoor exercise area.
Outdoor exercise area, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
And I'm sitting there thinking, you know, I'm guessing is something similar to what's that, the Pine Grove place? It was actually an Eagle Scout project? Or is it something that's different than that?
No, it's... well, it's... if you've been to Barron Stadium, they've got this exercise area with this foam matting, and it's got these different life cycle stations where you can do various exercises on different apparatuses. They've got about five or six different stations that you can go to.
Are any of these items you could just fold into your annual budget in years going forward?
Well, and that's... well, and that is something that we've done. Some of the things that I've left out are, you know, in years past, when we've had to... you know, we started our lighting project at Dellinger Park in about 2003 by doing one field at a time, and counsel was always able... was able for, well, it took for what was going to be a seven-year project, took about 13 years. But anyway, we finally did it. But anyway, counsel was able to give money to light one field, you know, every... every... every other budget year or something like that. So it is something that, you know, that we can do. And then also in this right here, tennis, what we do, we normally... tennis is normally a maintenance item that we have in our budget about every five to six years, but it's also something that we've got to renovate the courts in our bond project, too, so we're just kind of rolling this in. We're rolling this in together.
Any other questions or direction for Greg on this? Is everybody comfortable with the prioritized list that he has right now? Of course, the... is everybody fine with that?
I got just, I guess, a general question coming out of budget. You know, that was one thing that, I guess, a question that I had asked prior, too, was with all that we've done, you know, spending, you know, virtually $10 million on our staff wise, has it... has it helped with staffing? Do we need additional staffing? I think originally, it was we didn't need, you know, we were good, but I know that we've had people retiring and so on and so forth.
Well, you know, actually, if I need staff, you know, I'll say, yes, I need maintenance staff. It's, you know, we're trying to maintain a lot of acreage in our parks. Even though there's new buildings, there's, you know, although a lot of the departments have been more generous to help on different aspects, you know, our staff, and I take responsibility for this, we neglected a lot of our normal stuff that we've done in our parks. We've got a lot of tree trimming that needs... that's been neglected that needs to be done. You know, a lot of stuff that's got to be done that we're going to have a hard time catching up on. So that's your question is, yes, we need help.
Because that was something that was a concern, and I was in the sort of the group that went... that we all sort of got together in regards to the bond and what needed to be done, and that was a concern that the public had was, you know, do we have the staff? You know, yes, we're going to beautify this, but in 10 years, are we going to be able to maintain?
Well, you know, again, this part, and I told you wrong earlier, I said there's the two things that we were not doing are the things that were not done. We also had the trail. So, you know, during our... during Parks and Recreations growth the last 20 years, you know, we've added... we've added a lot of parks, a lot of property, and we have not added the staff for that maintenance staff, and it is hurting us maintenance-wise.
Was that addressed at all in your budget this year?
Well, there's no new personnel.
So, no. Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. That's his polite way of saying he may have asked for it, he may not have gotten it. So what we've learned, and I'm sure Greg probably... I'm sure the other department heads would say, gee, can we buy you more equipment? Well, sure. Can we give you more people? Well, yeah, I'm sure. So...
Good plan.
But thank you, Greg. I appreciate, first of all, all the hard work that's gone, and everything that's been done so far has looked absolutely fantastic. I saw that the entrance to Dellinger is coming together all on the Pine Grove side.
Yeah, we've done some testing. We've got our posts and rails on the left side going out and just to see how everything looks, and so we'll be starting doing that next week. And again, that's one of the things that our staff is doing this, and it's taking away from our normal stuff, so kudos to them, our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Greg. All right. We have three items to add. I know in the work session, Keith told us two, but there's actually three, so chair will entertain a motion. Add three items to the agenda.
Really good.
I've got a motion, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Three items added, and we'll all be surprised by what the third one is. Tom, I believe you're doing the first one, Mr. Reinhardt, for the resolution for the Georgia One Fund.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Counsel, as you know, we will be closing on our water and sewer bond fund next... not bond fund, but bond issue next week. We will need somewhere to invest the funds. I am requesting that you sign... be authorized to sign the resolution brought before you tonight. This will actually clean up and update an existing account that we have, open at Georgia Fund One, and give us the right to deposit monies into that account. I recommend approval of the resolution to update the Georgia Fund One account labeled the water and sewer bonds.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you, Tom. Keith, you have the license agreement for the Dabbs property.
Yes, Mayor. As y'all know, when we approved buying the Dabbs property, one of the conditions was a license agreement. That is being finalized and working out, and I would like y'all to go ahead and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the license agreement at closing. Basically, it allows them to continue certain earth-moving operations, which they're doing for the church next door or across the street for a six-month period.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And our mystery item?
Yes, the mystery item, which the mayor is familiar with, but I did not notice it was part of the agenda until we actually started the meeting. Our bond counsel on the bond issue, Nelson and Mullins, was during the process of issuing the bonds, was hired as... to represent one of the pharmaceutical companies that is part of our opioid litigation complaint that the city is involved in with numerous other cities. And they have asked if we would sign a waiver of conflict letter for them with respect to that, that they're actually representing us with one half of the firm, and the other half of the firm is suing us, even though they... in big firms, they don't talk about these matters. It is recommended that y'all do approve this in this case, and as a matter of fact, since all the legal work on this will be done June 28th, and the litigation won't be really starting till after that, there won't be any real actual conflict. It is recommended for y'all's approval.
You recommend a conflict.
Thank you. I'm recommending waiver of the conflict.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, our financial report, please, sir.
Tom, that's the first time you were too fast.
I'm sorry?
You were too fast. You came up way too fast, they couldn't get it up.
I'm sorry. I'll try to walk a little slower next time around.
Please walk faster.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, tonight we'll be reviewing the financial report for April 2018 and comparing it to April 2017. The general fund revenues increased over last year by $135,000. Expenses increased by $952,000. The three areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis are local office and sales tax have an increase there of about $188,000. Police lines and forfeiture have an increase there of about $30,000. And then the billing permits and inspection fees have an increase of about $43,000. The water and sewer fund revenues increased over last April by $630,000. Expenses increased by $1.1 million. This is due to increased personnel and increased capital expenditures. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last April by $2.1 million. Expenses increased by $1.5 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchased gas, increased debt services expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues decreased from last year by about $2 million. Expenses increased by $392,000. This is due to increased personnel costs, increased operating expenses, and increased cost of purchased electricity. And in the stormwater fund, revenues increased over last April by $66,000. Expenses decreased by $61,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operation expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by $183,000, and expenses increased by $304,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last year by $172,000. Expenses increased by $440... I'm sorry, $461,000. This is due to increased operating expenses and increased capital expenses. That is my report for the evening.
Thank you. I've got a question about the lost funds. I mean, obviously, good news that the sales tax seems to be charting pretty well. Looking that we budgeted 3.7 and ordered about three and a quarter right now, do you see that tracking over the next two months? Are we going to be over... if it continues the trend that it has?
If it continues the trend...
How much do you... over do you think we're trending to be by the end of the...
I would say probably maybe $100,000, if that much, which is good, because in the years past, it's always been below budget.
Sure. Okay. All right. Any other questions on the financial report? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any comment? You're good. All right. Any other business that needs to come forth, Counsel, this evening? There is none. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.